Yeah, I got tired.
Okay, I'm good. I just.
Yeah, like the.
Oh, you do first.
I don't.
First of all.
That's nice. You'll make me an hour and a half.
How are you?
Testing one, two.
I'd like to call to order the May 23 regular meeting of the Mathactin Board of School Directors. To order, please rise for the pledge.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, Mr. McGinnis is not in attendance. He is excused, and Ms. Perdue will be late. Now it's time for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers. Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have a number of guests and scheduled speakers, but first and foremost, we have Dr. Sorjean here this evening to help us recognize some enormous accomplishments in terms of service to the Mathactin School District, School community in recognizing retirees here this evening. Dr. Sorjean.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening, Dr. Zerbi, members of the Board of School Directors and members of the Mathactin community. We often refer to the staff of Mathactin School District as our Mathactin family. Our Mathactin family members regularly spend years and even decades in dedicated service to the education of our students and operation of our school facilities. I am honored to recognize this evening those members of our Mathactin family who either have or will be concluding their professional service with us during the 2022-2023 school year. Together, these nineteen members of our Mathactin family represent a collective total of three-hundred-and-eighty-four years of dedicated service to our district. The good work they have done will continue to ripple out into our local community, but also indeed to our entire world as generations of Mathactin graduates become the next leaders of tomorrow. On behalf of everyone in our Mathactin community, I extend our profound appreciation and gratitude to our retirees and wish them all the very best of health and happiness in the years ahead. I will now read the names of our retirees and ask them to come forward and be recognized and receive our applause. They are, in alphabetical order, Rhonda Asher, Annette Kramer, Rebecca Gallagher, Philip Gravenes, Beth Hall, Kelly Harmer, Cynthia Hartson, Gary Horn, Robert Jones, Stephen Martin, Allison Miller, Stephen Rice, Joan Roth, Elizabeth Sanna, Barry Shade, Kimberly Shade, Lori Shaw, and Carolyn Yonick. Congratulations to all of our retirees.
Thank you to our retirees, and thank you, Dr. Sorjean, for that presentation. Next on the agenda for scheduled guests and speakers, we have the Award of Excellence. Mr. Bricker, Director of Business Services, will provide recognition to our bus and food service workers.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. For the first one, we have Michelle Terranova. Michelle has always a positive attitude and allows her to create a strong relationships with teachers, students, and her colleagues. She is always a delight to work with and has stepped up the breakfast run on her own when we have been short. Michelle is dependable, never calls out, and takes pride in all that she does at our head cafeteria. Michelle Terranova. Next, we have Lynn Conswallow. Lynn stepped up numerous times since joining the Sky Cola team, from cleaning the racks in the fridge to mastering the cash register to helping prep or food cook. Lynn does all this with a smile, and she continues to ask, what more can she do? The students love her, and the cafeteria team is beyond grateful for her hard work and dedication. Lynn Conswallow. Next for our work, we have Carla Evans. Carla Evans joined the high school team this year as an assistant cook and took on the deli prep on the top of learning her assistant cook role. She stepped up to be the lead cook, and she continues to impress. She works around the kitchen with a smile and is constantly laughing and lifting the high spirits of others. Carla has been a breath of fresh air on the other teams and a wonderful addition to help us keep the hotline going as much as possible. Carla Evans. Next, in First Student, we have Taj Davis. Taj works and speaks, Taj works speaks for itself. She began working with First Student as a driver in 2019, but quickly moved up to her current role as the routing coordinator. So if you have any complaints on your bus routes, it's her, not me. She works vigorously with the drivers to understand and prevent potential route issues and safety concerns. While I'm joking about it, Taj is committed to ensuring the students of Mathactin arrive to school and home on time with safety being the number one priority. She does a great job. Thank you, Taj Davis. Chris Rubendall is a mechanic for First Student. When Chris isn't working as a mechanic, he's out driving the buses and getting students to and from school safely. Chris is a team player who is always willing to go above and beyond what is expected in his position. His work ethic and flexibility are what make him a great employee and even better person. We are lucky to have him on our team. Chris Rubendall. And finally, we have Patricia Bitzel. Patricia has been transporting students to Mathactin for over thirty years. In fact, this is Patricia's fortieth year and unfortunately, her final year here. She is experienced, reliable, but more importantly, she is constant for the children she transports every morning and afternoon. Her commitment to the students and the community are second to none. Patricia will be retiring, as I said, at the end of this school year and will be missed greatly. It is with great joy and appreciation that we wish her the best on her retirement. Congratulations.
Now, for, on our guests and scheduled speakers this evening, we have a familiar face, a familiar faces, I may say, in the fact that Tom Kelly is here again from Zezwitz Music to present in collaboration with our music department, the Best Communities for Music Education Recognition Award. I believe the award will be posted on the screen behind me, and it's all yours, Mr. Kelly. Thank you again for being back here, and thank you for your commitment to Mathactin and supporting us.
You are very welcome, Dr. Zerbi, members of the board. Congratulations. I come to you this evening as not an education representative from Zezwitz Music, who work with your dedicated teachers on a weekly basis, but Zezwitz is a member of the NAMM Foundation. And NAMM stands for the National Association of Music Merchants, and I'm here to at least discuss and celebrate the seventh year in a row documented that the Mathactin School District has been awarded this accolade. Little scope and sequence, the NAMM Foundation started this particular program over twenty years ago where school districts can apply, and it's a rather lengthy thirty-two-page-plus application which has to be done. They change questions over, over the year, and there are essay questions. It goes very deep into the performance opportunities, the rehearsal space, the dedication of the administration and the staff into, into what's being provided to the students here in the Mathactin community. The, there's roughly eight thousand-plus school districts, and there's only fourteen-thousand in the country that applied for this particular award this year. There were only eight hundred and twenty-one that actually received this particular commendation. It's proof to the dedication of the administration. Of course, the staff that is here with me this evening, they work tirelessly behind the scenes, and for if there are any parents here this, this evening, those that are getting them to and from rehearsals, making sure that they have instruments, making sure that they're getting to performances on time, the back and forth. If you're a music parent, you kind of know that. Dr. Zerbi, I think you feel that first, first and foremost. But again, it goes to the, the tireless dedication here as the community. So I'm very proud to be here to speak on behalf of, of the NAMM Foundation. Like I said, it's, it's evaluated independently. Once the applications come to NAMM, they're sent off to the University of Kansas. They're independently evaluated on their own merit. This isn't just apply and you get it. The numbers that I mentioned earlier, it, it's a very elite group that, that actually gets this particular award, and to have it on a yearly basis here, year after year, here in the Mathactin community is, is proof that music is, is well and alive here in the Mathactin community. Music does make you smarter. That's a proven fact. But again, the dedication of the administration, the staff that is here, and, and the parents of the community, I congratulate you on a job well done, and hopefully, we can be here next year at this time and do the same. So congratulations, Mathactin School District. And I'm very honored that you have that plaque leaving Reading today. I had the plaque in my hand, and I set it down, and I load it up for tomorrow, and I left it back at home. So I'm awesome. Keep that, keep that screenshot up if you don't mind. This would be great backdrop. Thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and we expect you back next year, if at all possible. And with that said, that brings us to the last guests and scheduled speakers. We have Dr. Angstad and Dr. Mangano here this evening to give us a celebratory review of the inclusive practices model that we brought forward this school year. Do you want to move up front? Let's go. So members of the school board, if you want to take seats in the front row, we can, we can watch the presentation on the screen.
We appreciate the opportunity to share the collective work of our staff and also reflect on the why of this work, and we hope this presentation provides that information to
This year as a district, we focused on many things, and we tried to capture a few. We provided supplementary aids and services in the least restrictive environment. We included all students with and without disabilities in kindergarten, full-day kindergarten from the start. We maximized our resources and our instructional time. We helped students to grow academically, socially, and emotionally. We created a universal welcoming environment in all of our schools. We worked tirelessly to improve school climate, a sense of belonging for our students and our staff. You'll note at the bottom of the slide, these are the key words that sort of embraced the work that we did this year: inclusive practices, trauma-informed care, social-emotional
It's also important to note that with all of this work, it's a systemic change in our district, and systemic change is complex. The work associated was never easy. It takes time, resources, and efforts. Research suggests that systemic change can take anywhere from three to five years, so we're starting, but we have a way to go. We also want to acknowledge that we anticipated and experienced some challenges and obstacles along the way. However, in true Mathactin fashion, our staff demonstrated a profound commitment to the education of all of our students in pursuit of our goals. In our Mathactin family, we all belong.
are committed to doing more and more, and the work isn't easy. It takes a team, and together, we're here to make sure that we can do the best we can for the reasons you just saw. So thank you. Thank you.
Members of the board, are there, are there any questions for Dr. Angstad or Dr. Mangano? Ms. Perdue?
Just want to say thank you both for the presentation. I know in my time here at Mathactin, working with you both, you've been very strong advocates for the work of inclusion, and I do applaud your efforts, and that was a great video just to see, and just to see the strides that we are making in the distance. in the district and within the work that you're both leading. And Dr. Engstad, I know you mentioned we have a way to go, and I do agree we have a way to go. We are taking steps, and we do have a lot more work to do just to make sure we are meeting the needs of all our students within the district. One of the things that I wanted to ask is, in looking towards the next school year or the next year or the future, what are some of the things that we can expect to see us doing more in reference to inclusion?
Sure, I can answer that for you. Moving forward, it's just more training. It's more supporting how we support the instructional piece, how we support the behavioral piece, just really how do we help support all of our kids? And we don't want to lose sight of their needs. So, you have to look at their specific needs and how you support them. But it's really just being there, helping, being in the classrooms, making sure that supports are there that are needed.
And thank you very much. And I know I was, this weekend, there was a special education alliance picnic. And it was just nice to see many of our Mathacton families there also. And I think it was a great event put together by the SCA. So, I do want to say thank you. And I know we've partnered with them many times for a lot of the events they've had, whether it's a webinar or some of the events in the school. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for members of the board to my left? Seeing none to my right. Just one other announcement. I think we know that we have an event we're going to tomorrow morning. Do you want to tell the board about that?
Sure, so tomorrow, our students that participate in Special Olympics, it's hosted at Springfield High School or Springfield School, sorry. And we look forward to seeing our team participate. And Dr. Zerby, Mr. Jean, and I will be attending the event to root our students off. So, very excited.
Excellent. Dr. Mangano and Dr. Engstad, thank you so much for your work this school year. And thank you to our staff, our parents, our students, and everyone in Mathacton for making this inclusive model an important priority for, not only for this school year, but the future of our school community. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Madam President, that ends my guest and scheduled speakers on the agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Now, moving on to reports, we have committee reports attached. Ms. Washington will provide her next report in June. Now, on to the MCIU, Ms. Reese.
That came up fast. Sorry, I'm cleaning my glasses, sorry. We met on 4/26, and we meet again tomorrow. Keep it pretty short. It was our regular business. Our main topics was a presentation actually on early intervention. And for those unaware, last topic was transition services for our students up to ages 21. But early intervention is across the county with three- to five-year-olds, all who have individual education plans. And they went into detail about the 18 classrooms across the county serving about 33 students. And it is a very important part of our public school system in Montgomery County. So, it was a really nice presentation for the board and to just kind of see some of the teachers and some of the activities that go on across the county for those students. But mainly, I just wanted to also mention the Legislative Breakfast, which happened on 4/28. Typically, it's at the IU, but I thought it was interesting. It couldn't be at the IU this year because of staffing challenges with caterers. So, everywhere is feeling it. So, we had the Legislative Breakfast at a hotel nearby. And there were three superintendents who spoke. And Dr. Zerby, Dr. Gallagher from Sodderton, and the superintendent from Norristown. And to give Dr. Zerby a shout-out, he is the second-most senior superintendent in Montgomery County, next to Frank Gallagher at Sodderton. And the main topics of discussion from those three superintendents was staffing challenges, mental health, and charter school reform. So, that was also a good day for the, a good informational session and good talking with other districts courtesy of the IU. And I guess I'll go right into the Tech Center. Yep, we met on May 15th. They have an Equity Council at the school that comprises of staff and students. And they gave a, they've given different presentations throughout the year, and they gave a nice presentation on microaggressions. We also celebrated a little bit of, they had a signing day at the Tech Center, which they hadn't had in quite a while due to COVID. So, it was all the students and where they're either going to for, to advance their education or into the workforce. And they had different people come for that from the workforce and colleges, which was great. And then the biggest discussion was around capacity, which we've been discussing for months. And it was nice to know that next year, right as of right now, and they'll be tweaking it, there will be 1,234 students at the Tech Center next year, which is an increase of 12%. And what's, that has always been our goal, as I've been on that, the JOC at the Tech Center for eight years. And we have always been talking about, you know, how wonderful the Tech Center is and all the wonderful opportunities for students. And to see that it's growing that much is great. There is hope, if all goes well, of adding another space and adding another health services for the following year. And then that anticipated enrollment would be even higher. And I think I hit that all. Do you want to add anything, Liz? I know you were there as well.
Yeah, no, just really the capacity is the topic about how to serve all of the interested students and allow them to get the program of their choice. So, there might be some creative ways down the future that we have to take a look at everything. But the staff at North Monco Tech is committed to doing that. Okay, thank you, Ms. Reese. Next student reports, we have Joey Shaw and Shamika Panda.
Good evening, everyone. To begin, Mathacton held its prom on the 28th of April at the Sheridan Hotel in King of Prussia from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. In addition to this, post-prom was held at the high school from 11:00 to 5:00 a.m. and included raffle baskets, inflatables, tournaments, games, a coffee truck, and much more. On May 12th, students currently taking a physics class have the opportunity to participate in Physics Day at Dorney Park. Regarding sports, tryouts for the Mathacton cheerleading team were held from May 15th to the 19th. The athletic office hosted a meeting on May 17th to gauge interest for a boys' volleyball team. The United, the Unified Track and Field Team competed in their final meet on May 8th at North Penn High School. Also, Mathacton baseball will compete in the second round of districts on the 24th. As far as future events are concerned, Villanova will host a college fair on May 24th from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. Senior Fun Day is on May 25th from 9:30 to 1:30 after the Senior Breakfast. It will be hosted at Hedner Park with food trucks, inflatables, and games. Looking forward to this. Lastly, the overnight camp experience in Boyertown, Camp Niedig, will be held from June 16th to the 19th for juniors who are interested. The camp will include guest speakers from multiple occupations, problem-solving activities, and student-led workshops. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shamika Panda, and I'm honored to be talking to you today as a student representative. At the high school, the fourth marking period is more than halfway over, and both students and teachers are preparing to undergo finals from June 2nd to June 9th. Seniors have a special altered schedule due to graduation practice, so all students are advised to reach out to their teachers for information on when the test will take place. The high school also held its AP exam testing window from May 1st to May 19, 2023, for students to be able to have the opportunity to earn college credit by scoring either three, four, or five on a college board-approved test. It is also currently holding its annual Keystone Testing Window for students in order to earn the requirements needed to graduate. The high school will hold its next SAT date on June 3, 2023 at the school. Late registration for the exam is still open for students to be able to sign up. The high school will also host its annual award ceremony to honor outstanding students in grades nine to 12 across a variety of academic, athletic, and extracurricular endeavors on March 24, 2023, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., or tomorrow. Open to the community, it celebrates the incredible accomplishments of the entire school body across the whole year. Across the months of April and May, the high school students have been acting as counselors for the annual Skyview Outdoor Education Field Trip for District 5th graders, which took place after a four-year hiatus. Students were able to interact with younger peers in a variety of activities intended to introduce students to sustainable living and the natural environment. The high school theater company will hold its annual senior showcase on Friday, June 2nd, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. And it intends to celebrate the skills of its senior graduating students one last time in a variety of songs, dances, and interpretive performances. The theater company also announced the, its season for the next school year to include a Midsummer Night's Dream for its fall play and Chicago for its spring musical. Finally, the high school community still has the opportunity to purchase a copy of the Creative Arts Magazine known as Element, which is a student-run interest group that produces an annual magazine showcasing Mathacton High School students and stats, creative writing, and art. This year's publication is a double publication containing submissions from both the 2021 to 2022 and the 2022 to 2023 school year. So, please be sure to buy one and support the organization. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before we move into the foundation report, I just want to take a moment to recognize Ms. Panda, Mr. Shaw. Thank you so much for your work on the board, and we wish you every continued success after graduation. And we thank you so much for being here and for all your contributions.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the foundation report, Ms. Piraglini.
Everybody, just a couple of quick things. We are very excited to announce that we approved seven grants this spring, including funding for teams, which is test of engineering aptitude, math, and science to compete in the national competition, CNC plasma cutter for Arcola, Makerspace and laser cutter setup for Skyview, HD camera for Warrior News at the high school, and the ISTE conference for teachers to attend. And we'll have more details on all these projects and the funding as we finish up our year. And we'll do a presentation. We are also working on security dates for next year, including Mathacton 5K, our Welcome Back Warriors Alumni Event, which will be around homecoming. Apex Awards will also be back, but it's going to be a little later in the fall this year. And then we wanted to announce that we have two board members that will be resigning at the end of this year. And we want to thank Mary Jane Barbone and Judy Horex for their service to our community. They were wonderful, wonderful board members, and they'll be missed. And lastly, our board would like to congratulate the upcoming seniors, and you are soon going to be official alumni. So, if you would like to join Mathacton alumni and friends, please register at mathactonalumni.org. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we have communications. Ms. Kelly?
Good evening. The school year may be winding to a close, but there are still many exciting things happening in our buildings before the end of the year. The Incubator EDU program, some of you have known it as the Shark Tank Class over at the high school, is having its pitch event tomorrow. Arcola's National Junior Honor Society induction is May 31st, and there are a host of Field Day and Fun Day activities happening across the district. We are all looking forward to graduation on June 13th and celebrating the class of 2023. Graduation will take place in the high school stadium at 4:00 p.m. Additional commencement details can be found on the high school website under Featured News and Announcements. And finally, the last day of school is on June 14th. We hope everyone has a safe and amazing summer, and we look forward to welcoming new and returning students at the end of August. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. And now, we have the superintendent's report, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, I have two matters. I want to do the second one first, which is the Mathacton High School M-Awards. So, if we could post that up on the screen for me, please. We are proud of the achievements of all of our students. This year, 150 members of the class of 2023 have earned M-Awards for academic excellence. Our students, our board representatives, Shamika Panda and Joseph Shaw are among them. These members of the class of 2023 will receive an M-Award in their graduation packet, achieving a 93% or greater grade point average for the 2022-23 school year. Following graduation, these students will attend various higher education institutions such as Harvard, Cornell, Columbia, the University of Pennsylvania, Penn State, Drexel, and Temple, among others, or plan to serve our country in the military. Congratulations to these M-Award recipients and to the entire class of 2023. Next, under my report is the Audubon Elementary School property update. So, as an update on the status of the former Audubon Elementary School property, a reminder, at my recommendation, the board approved in November of 2022 that the building be leveled and that I provide to the board by July of 2023 a recommendation for future educational use of the property. In terms of leveling the building, given the uncertainty from our civil engineer with obtaining a required county NPDES, or what's called the National Pollutant Discharge Illumination Systems Permit, prior to the issuance of bids in the marketplace, which were originally slated for June, we are now pivoting towards placing the bids on the street in December of 2023 with a targeted demolition to occur sometime in February, March of 2024. Moving this timeline back from its original July 23, 2023 demolition target will allow bidders to bid with greater specificity and will allow for a single mobilization of equipment, which could, which should reduce costs associated with the project. Furthermore, the concern from the Property Committee of the Board was that if we go forward with leveling the building as scheduled and then come back later to do the grading and the seating, we would have to fence the area in for several months until such time the seating and grading could be completed. We do not believe that this is the safest path forward, nor does it sit, does it make sense for us to rent fencing and yet take on additional costs. So, again, we will be, we will move towards placing bids in the market in December of 2023 for demolition target of the building for February, March of 2024. So, with that shared, please know that we have allocated the following into the existing budget, meaning the budget presentation, the proposed final budget that you approved last week includes the following figures: for the 23-24 school year, disposal services of $193.45, water and sewage of $1,200, general supplies of $3,500, natural gas of $18,000, electricity of $2,000, oil of $200, insurance of $626, and maintenance of $50,000 estimate, which includes a total of $75,719.45 in the 2023-24 budget. And for members of the board, I will, I'll provide all these figures in an email, so you don't need necessarily write them down. In terms of producing recommendations for educational use, I am informing the board this evening that I do not have a good educational use recommendation at this time. And aside from what I have already shared, including, one, keeping the property as a location for a future school if needed in the future with an estimated cost between $50 to $70 million; two, install a track or athletic facility on the Audubon property at estimated, estimated cost of $5 to $7 million. And as a reminder, in a previous presentation, I said this is likely not a good plan since the track and field improvements would be best placed on the Arcola campus for the students that they would directly serve. And therefore, that would be an estimated cost of about $6 to $8 million. A third option is to move the district busing terminal to Audubon. This provides the high school students, staff, visitor parking relief on the high school campus, improves campus safety. But it will come with an annual increase in transportation cost between $300,000 to $400,000, and a one-time construction of the site between $5 to $7 million. And the, and the last one I have is create an outdoor environmental learning space, which I do not have dollar figures for at this moment in time. But this needs to be further developed, and it comes with an operational access challenge, given that everyone that needs to utilize this learning space has to be bussed to the location. So, it's only going to be available as an outdoor learning space during the, during good weather months and is certainly going to create disruptions to utilize the space as we might intend. So, with that said, I plan to be presenting these items once again in more specificity along with some of the original noneducational uses, including the community park concept at the June 2023 meeting of the at the June 2023 meeting of the board, and will ask then that the board either direct me to move forward with one of these ideas, seek more information, extend the deadline for educational use, given the change in demolition schedule, or direct me to prepare to sell the property, or direct me to allow the property to sit for a period of time following the completion of the demolition to determine further path forward. So that is scheduled for consideration at next month's meeting, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Are there any questions from the board so far? Okay. Now it is time for a public comment on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on this agenda. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. One fiscal item that's on the budget, on the, for up for vote this evening is a couple additions at Arrowhead. One is for 26 bollards, and another is for fencing totaling over $93,000. This is a major revision to the original design of the property that had 16 lighted bollards. Ideally, this design change would be by a different architect. These two items deserve a tabling for more study, as I will present. One idea to protect the playground could be a two-to-three-foot-high wall along the roadway between the, or at the back of the sidewalk along the roadway, along the playground area, done in stone, brick, or concrete. Another is a use of a, a set of guardrails similar to those along many roadways with gaps to facilitate student moves out of and into, onto buses. Again, the smart move is to vote to delay for further study and likely cost savings and avoid various problems associated with the bollards and the fence. And it's unclear to me as to how much detail the administration has provided to the board. Usually architects make sketches, and I'm not aware of any sketches for this design change. Again, for the third time this evening, I recommend to vote to delay for further study. Thank you.
Jim Malik Warzest, following up on Mr. Andrews' point. Looks like our architect designed Arrowhead with bollards, which are, for some reason, being replaced. So can anybody tell me why? What changed? Was the design by the architect not sufficient for safety of the students? If that's the case, and I don't know because nobody's explained it, then take the money from KCBA. If I'm wrong about them doing the design of the school and the accessories, then let me know. Seems to me it was designed with bollards, but you guys don't like it for whatever reason, and you haven't explained it to the public. So explain to us why the original design by your architect, your favorite architect, is insufficient to protect the kids. And if they goofed, then let them pay the 90K instead of making us pay the 90K. Payment of the bills. Was it defined, or got this from the Finance Committee regarding right-to-know legal costs? Year-to-date, as of, you know, May or April, $62,000. And not one word, not one word, but one explanation for why we're going from 970 grand to $62,000. Now, it's going to be more, we got one more month, but it's going to be under $100,000. So how do you manage to save 800 and some odd thousand dollars? How did it happen? Nobody wants to take credit for it. If I'm saving the district 800 grand, I'd want to know what miraculous thing happened to make it happen. Well, I know what happened. You got rid of your old solicitor, you hired the show Bart Onduli, and 800 grand, which was being wasted on the right-to-know process and could have been used to take care of kids, take care of test score problems. But nobody up here wants to discuss that issue. Now, I say pay the bill. Best decision you've ever made, best money ever spent is on your current right-to-know solicitor. But explain it to the public. Say, hey, we saved 800 grand because we got rid of the old solicitor who was, had a performance problem. That's your right-to-know problem, not the requestor. It was the solicitor. So if you can answer those questions, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any more public comment? Is there any more public comment for board action items this evening? All right, seeing none. We will move on with the agenda. Next is for board meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the April 18 work and special meeting minutes and the April 25 regular meeting minutes as attached? Mr. Rookstol, may I have a second? Ms. Perdue? Any comments or questions from the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Eight-zero. Thank you. Next is fiscal items. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Madam President. This month, we have six items under the finance agenda with no changes from the work session.
All right. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve all fiscal items as presented? Ms. Cleary? May I have a second? Ms. Cancro? Any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I do want to follow up on the public comment and whether the bollards at the Arrowhead School were included in the original design or whether that design changed.
So in, to understand what had transpired, the design took place, the bollards that are installed today were part of the design, and those bollards, as you can, you've been told, are bollards that hold lighting fixtures, sort of designed to provide illumination during the evening hours to help illuminate the walkway. But they do not provide the recommended safety bollards that our safety team and our safety consultants, who were not, again, who were not necessarily a part of the original design of this, this building, and happened to have the evaluations done and having the design, the, the safety team start making recommendations on best practices, which include making sure that fencing is around playgrounds, bollards are installed in certain locations. So it was after the construct, the school opened up and construction was substantially completed that an assessment of the, of the property at Arrowhead was, was made to determine whether or not there are improvements that can be made or should be made. Now, in terms of requirements, the requirements for the fencing and the bollards, actually are no requirements for them. So I just want the board to understand that this is not a design requirement, it's not a code requirement, it doesn't mean you have to do this. We're saying that from this, from a safety perspective, from the professionals that, that help advise us on all of our facilities, they're recommending that these bollards as part of our strategic plan across the district, and you've noticed them at the high school, you've noticed them being put up as we, as we, and, and, and of course, so it's not a new, it's not a new practice, it just happened that the safety process and the design didn't coincide at the exact same time. So this is not an error. This is a review of the property after it's been opened, and we recommend that you approve these bollards so that we can move forward with construction and have these things ready for the start of the 23-24 school year.
So I have a follow-up question. The, the design of these bollards for the safety concerns, did they, did they evaluate other options, or is this the only option that they gave us?
This, this is, this is not the only option that was considered, and again, we're talking, you could have limited the number of bollards that you wanted to put down. Again, there's no, there's no requirement, and so the, the, the challenge with safety is that while when there are requirements, it's easy for us to follow. When we're talking about best practices, those are things that, well, what, what would be the best thing? What, what can we do in order to best prevent a potential incident or accident from happening in the future? And if you, if you understand where these bollards are being placed, you will recognize that as cars are coming onto the property, they're actually, you're, it's hard for me to demonstrate, but when they're coming, coming onto the property, you'll be making a left-hand turn right at the corner where the playground will, will, is now, now sits, and cars will be concentrated along that pavement. So the concept really is to make sure that any car that is making that turn can be securely prevented from hopping the, the sidewalk and moving into where potentially students could be at risk. So the bollards, while there is quite a number of them, you know, we can certainly reduce the number of bollards, but that would only be for in the front of the entrance way of the, of the, of the building. So there was a number of different things we talked about. This is probably the, and I say probably, this is likely the least intrusive and most safe operation that we can, we can put forward, and it is a recommendation of the safety team.
So I guess I just-
And this, this didn't materialize from the architect, this materialized from the safety team. So with Mr. Regina, the members of the Arrowhead Safety Committee, our consultants, we, we certainly recognize visibly that fencing needed to be put up for, for the playground, but that, that's to keep students contained, and the bollards are designed to keep the students safe.
Right. I mean, I fully understand that the fencing is not going to stop a vehicle from entering that area, and it's really just to keep the students in and bolls and other equipment inside the playground area. So I fully acknowledge that there's a requirement there to provide protection for those, those kids on the playground. I guess, I wonder if there's an opportunity here for us to pause that and then come back with more information that says, here's what the design looks like, here's the safety requirements, this is how we've done it at other locations in the district, that we're being consistent, right? That's sort of my question, I guess.
Well, I, I think that the board at any time can table a matter and, and go back and look at design, and we can do that. I'm just concerned that, and equally, by going and doing a redesign, we can get someone else to give us a different opinion. My hope is that we can put a safety mechanism in place before the start of school year. That's, that's my concern.
Yeah, and that is a concern. I fully acknowledge that's a concern. If we sort of redesign, we're delaying this project, which is important to do. So I'm going to open it up to other people to-
I just, so I know we talked about this last week. I just have one question. If we tabled this in coming back, because this is getting installed after, I mean, we're only a few weeks out, out of the school year ending, so what is the, with this on the table now, what was the plan for installation, the timelines?
Plan was to have it done over the summer.
I'm sorry?
The plan was to have them installed over the summer.
Okay, so like a July-August timeframe?
I'd have to look back. I don't remember the exact timeframe. They have to order them, get them in, and put them in.
And I'm just wondering if, you know, if this also become a challenge with supply also, like if we delay, and I'm just asking because my, if we discussed this last week, and this was brought up as a safety concern, right? And so the plan is to have this installed when we open up, back up in the 23-24 school year. So I'm just asking what, pushing this back, what that timeline looks like?
I think, Ms. Perdue, what Mr. Bricker is saying, that we don't know what the impact will be in terms of pushing it back. What I said earlier is that there's a potential that if we have to go back to redesign, you know, that could be several weeks to, to a month, you know, and therefore it, it, it increases the likelihood of not, of not being, having any protection in place. So you wouldn't necessarily go forward with the fencing, or you wouldn't go forward with the bollards until you come up with some other great design. But again, you know, the, the, the challenge here is, you know, certainly, if we're going to provide a safe environment for our students, it will come at a cost. So if we're, if we're thinking that we're going to be able to save money, reduce the number of bollards or something of that nature, I don't know how you do that, and, and I, and, you know, putting bollards in versus building a, a, a three-foot block wall, you know, the cost is going to be about the same, and, and, you know, I just don't, I'm just not certain what an alternative plan might look like. Mr. Regina, in terms of the review that the safety team has, had come up with, it, it appears that from all the discussion that we've had, these are the typical approaches for schools to take in terms of the safety for these entrances. Your thoughts?
Yep, that, that's accurate. Bollards and fencing is the recommendation of both our safety team, but also we just looked at a state grant, and one of the requirements in the state grant was literally written as bollards and fencing around playgrounds in order to move to Tier II financial grants. So it is something that is recommended by PCCD and by the school district and the consultants at Cardinal Point.
And I know I asked about it last week, whether one was needed, or the other, the impression that I got was that we needed to have the fencing and then the bollards was, the fencing was to keep the kids in the playground, and then the bollards was the safety, right? Just because what we have in place now is not really designed for that purpose as far as, it's really like illumination, as we call it, but not a safety perspective. So thank you.
Any other questions on that matter? Ms. Cancro?
No, I would just comment that I don't feel that we should delay this project. I do feel that because we've had the administration, the security, the consultation going through. I, I know that area very well, and I do agree that when you turn around near that playground, it's just closer than any of the other elementary school playgrounds. So you see the cars' potential to turn, and I've seen kids just kind of running around that area. It is needing to have a fence, and I feel like the fence is a comfortable feel, but I also think it's, it's not something, I think it's as a recommendation, and I do think the bollards, as we know, in all our buildings needs to have it, and it is a very long walkway, very long, unfortunately, and as, you know, you need to have certain spacing that's required that, you have to have that many bollards. So I don't really feel the, the need to delay it, but I just, that's what I wanted to share.
Thank you. Mr. Rookstol?
Yeah, just a quick question. I think this came up at the work session last week as well, but the current bollards that are there, they're there for lighting and illumination. Will the new bollards also have lighting and illumination, or will we be losing some lighting and illumination in that space and have to figure out how to add that back in a different way?
The design, as I saw, did not have the current bollards being removed, these were in addition to, but I can check that.
Can you speak up?
Wow. Let me try this, is it better? The design I was looking at had the existing bollards still staying in place, and these were in addition to. I will point out that they did go out the bid, and this is the lowest bidder, and it's on a state contract, and they were significantly lower than the bidder above them.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Just, just curious, how many bollards are we putting in?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. And is there a standard of how far apart? I mean, there's no code, you said, but is there a standard practice?
Yeah, it's my understanding, it's, I think, a three-to-four fee. I'd have to look at it specifically, but yeah, that's the common practice.
Okay, but the number that we have follows the common practice?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look at it specifically, but there is some common practice. I just unfortunately don't have that number in front of me.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, does anyone have any further comments or questions on fiscal? Okay, then, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie's eight-zero, thank you. Moving on to personnel, Dr. Sorghini.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. This month, we have the personnel items as presented at the work session with the following additions. One additional employment professional, Madeline Cooper, fourth-grade teacher at Arrowhead. We welcome Madeline to Methacton and look forward to the good work that she'll do with our students. Two additional uncompensated professional leaves, Jessica Randazzo, school psychologist at the high school, and Rebecca Wyble, special education instructor at Skyview, both as noted. And additional supplemental contracts for room movements and also extended school year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve all personnel items as presented? Mr. Winters, may I have a second? Ms. Reese? Any questions or comments from the board on any of these items? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries eight-zero, thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have curriculum and programs, Dr. Walsh.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President. I'm seeking your approval this evening for the following three items listed under 11A through 11C, and there have been no changes from last week's work session. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve all curriculum and program items as presented? Ms. Graff, may I have a second? Ms. Cancro? Any questions or comments from the board on curriculum and programs? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries eight-zero, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have policy. Mr. Regina?
Thank you, Madam President. Very busy policy committee meeting, as you can see here in our first read. A number of policies for first read, but specifically want to focus our attention to the two new policies, 137.2 and 137.3, specific to participation in curricular activities and academic courses by home education students, and participation in career and technical education programs. These are new policies that we're implementing via the PSBA process, and so those are two new ones that you'll be seeing. Obviously, first read aren't voted for this evening, second read is the vote, and these are the same as last week with no modifications from last month's vote for first read. Thank you.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve all policies under second read as presented, under first and second read as presented? Mr. Ruckstuhl, may I have a second? Ms. Perdue? Any questions or comments on policy? All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie's eight-zero, thank you. And next, we have other, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Madam President. The items listed under other are those that we discussed at the work session last week, and there are no changes.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve all items under other as presented? Ms. Perdue, may I have a second? Mr. Winters, thank you. Any questions or comments from anyone under other? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries eight-zero, thank you. All right, next, we have dates for board members' calendars. The dates for the upcoming meetings are listed on the agenda and the website. Please take note that the property committee meeting will be held at Arrowhead Elementary in June. And now it is time for old and new business. Does anyone have anything for old or new business this evening? Okay. Now it is time for courtesy of the floor, which is an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. Anyone for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Shelley Leonard, Lower Providence. Good evening. First off, I wanted to take a minute and congratulate our music department here on the award they received tonight, but more importantly, I wanted to focus on one of our music educators that we have here, and we're lucky enough to have him at Methacton, Mr. David Bickel. Mr. Bickel is truly a treasure to the Methacton community. It's evident how beloved Mr. Bickel is merely by looking at the size of the Skyview Chorus. Two-hundred-and-thirty-plus students, fifth and sixth graders, all singing. It's awesome to see that many students participating in a music program, and it's really a true testament to his enthusiasm, Mr. Bickel's passion, and just how he makes chorus so fun. He's definitely a large part of the award I feel like the Methacton Music Department received tonight. I'm a science teacher, and I've had conversations with Mr. Bickel regarding some of the units he's created for the general music classes here, and he's talked about the science of sound, which is amazing because, you know, science is a tested subject. So to have those core subjects kind of being scattered throughout really is awesome. Fused with STEM, it's awesome to have those things reinforced here. Aside from all of the awesome and intriguing stuff he does in his classroom, he also just brings a culture of positivity and fun to Skyview. Occasionally, he can be see dawning his inflatable T-Rex costume and waving to students and greeting them in the hallways, bringing smiles to all, students and staff alike. As a Methacton alumni, now turned parent here in this district, I know that at the very heart of this district are amazing educators. I know that, as from the student side and now from the parent's side. And I know that Mr. Bickel is certainly one of those. I look forward to his return to Skyview so that he can continue to inspire future generations of warriors. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lynn Danoff. I live in Lower Providence. I'm a graduate of Methacton in 2001 and have been fortunate enough to be the high school choir director at Norristown Area School District, right next door. I've been an educator for seventeen years, and I can say that these meetings rarely give the accolades to the teachers who are the true unsung heroes in the classroom. We laud the math teacher who's been here for fifty years, for all of those years of service, and the fresh-out-of-school teachers who get congratulated for surviving a whole year. But I'm going to share some positivity that is long overdue for someone who has helped dramatically steer my twelve-year-old on the right journey. My son hyper focuses on things he finds interesting. I'm fairly certain he could work for NASA right now if they'd let him. His ideas for how to eradicate cancer are cutting-edge, and apparently already in testing phases. He wanted nothing, and I mean nothing, to do with singing. It's hard for a choir teacher mom to have that. He kept telling me, that's your thing, mom, not mine. Last year, after the fifth and sixth grade music ensembles performed, a horn was sounded in the auditorium, and two hundred kids ran onto the risers, smiles beaming. That's what got him hooked. Not me, but a teacher. He never wanted to follow in my footsteps and do choir until that moment. It was very cool and exciting for him, and he signed up shortly thereafter. I can always tell when my son has music or chorus day becomes, he comes leaping and bounding into the house to tell me some silly story about Mr. Bickel. Most people don't see what happens in the classroom. They don't know how insanely difficult it is to make a genuine connection with your students when you have giant classes and very little time with them. Mr. Bickel, however, heard my son talk about BattleBots over and over and over, and took it upon himself to watch the show so he could have some sort of connection with him. It wasn't necessary, and it's not even music-related, but he formed a purposeful connection which allowed my son to feel comfortable, and at least the choir room. Mr. Bickel gives my son the structure and support he needs to feel like he can express himself fully, gives him the space he needs to feel accepted and like he is part of a community. Mr. Bickel's classroom is a safe haven for my son and has given him the chance to fall in love with singing. Thank goodness. It was surprising to find Mr. Bickel absent at the concert last week. The dedication of a music teacher is intense. We practiced for months on end, and when I tell you it would take an act of God to keep me from my classroom and from my students without any kind of conversation, or an email, or a phone call to parents. It seems odd to have a beloved choir director not show up and not send an email. My sincerest and heartfelt congratulations to the entire Methacton School District Music Department on their BCME award. I hope that all of them are able to celebrate that victory together. My son couldn't be here tonight, he's not feeling well, but he wanted me to say how much he hopes Mr. Bickel will be back before the end of the school year because he misses him a lot. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Hi. Kevin Shaw, Lower Providence. Twenty years ago, my wife and I bought a house in the district specifically for the school. Since then, we've had three children go through the school, and we're quite proud. So I want to thank you all. My son is here, Joey, and my wife and I couldn't be more proud. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jim Olakwar Sester. Thank you, Ms. Graff, for the inquiries into the Ballard situation. How much did we pay for these decorative ballards? That's something I think everybody should know, because what do we get? How much was it? If you could tell us, that'd be good. So I get this right. When the school was designed, it wasn't designed completely with safety in mind. Now, I'm sure when they designed it, they took safety into account when they designed the entrance to the building with all the security features. I'm sure they designed the rooms on the floors with the same safety in mind, but somehow they forgot about the exterior of the building with kids out in the playground? Didn't think about that till after the fact? So this is safety after the fact. Sounds to me like if you're going to build another school, you better have a better plan for safety than after the fact. Because I'm pretty sure you incorporated a bunch of safety features into that building before the fact. There's no discussion of these alternatives to these ballards either. I'm not sure I understand why. How much were they? Pros, cons, that kind of stuff? Dr. Zerby mentioned the Audubon Project. All of a sudden, we have an extensive, detailed option plan for Audubon. That's what we should have had before the decision was made, not after. Right? Five to seven mil here, five to seven mil here, moved the bus depot five to seven mil. How are we saving mon, because you guys have said we're saving money by tearing it down? I'm not saving any money. Two-hundred grand a year annual expense, it's going to take you thirty years to hit six mil. So I don't understand how you save money when you're going to put something there for five to seven mil. Doesn't make sense to me. I don't get it. But that analysis should have been done before you tore it down. Like leasing the building out, but you didn't want to because you didn't want the charter schools to have a shot at it. So there's another process problem. I was told by somebody who attended the education committee that you guys are annoyed with the ranking, us bringing up ranking. Well, the ranking's the ranking. When CARE took over, U.S. News &amp; World Report, eleven. Now sixty-two. School digger when CARE took over, ten, now eighty-five. The thing I got from that, though, is cost per pupil at seventeen thousand dollars a year. That's a private school education. So that's where you guys stand out, top ten out of a hundred. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Hi, everybody. Gina Stover, Lower Providence. Okay, so I just have a few things. I just wanted to let you know that we have great teachers here at Methacton, we really, really do. And Mr. Bickel, from our perspective, from a parent who has a special education student, he is very, very inclusive to our special education community here. And so I know that firsthand with my daughter, Abigail, and the fifth and the sixth grade was the first time that she was able to participate in chorus, which was amazing. And so I don't know if you guys know this, but our special education teacher collaborates with Mr. Bickel, our chorus teacher, and they physically come down in the afternoons, and they get to participate with all of the children. And that's one of the fantastic things that some of our special education teachers, we have a collaboration with the chorus teachers, and this is amazing. And I didn't have that opportunity in our fourth-grade level because of that, because we just didn't have that. And so Mr. Bickel is one of those type of people who will go and be above and beyond to do those kind of things. And so he also is really, really great. He has come to support home and school events. We've done a bingo night at Skyview where he was one of our callers with multiple other teachers. And so I just want to say that he does go above and beyond for particular things. So he is a really great teacher, in my opinion, for music as well. Congratulations to you guys, number seven, right? And then I just wanted to say about the billiards at Arrowhead, the question for you guys is, did we survey other schools for this as well? I know that we're talking about this fence, and the fence is going to be in place, but I just wanted to make you guys aware that Woodland does not even have a fence around its own playground right now. It goes right into our parking lot. And so if we're surveying Arrowhead, maybe we should also survey some of our other schools to see what they look like as well before we kind of make decisions. So in my personal opinion, yes, I would have put a fence around it. I would have tabled the pillar, the billiards, and kind of reevaluated that before making those decisions to see what all of our other schools actually have done. And if they need to be up to par, then I would have brought them up to par, and that would have been part of the discussion first. So thank you for allowing me to speak, and have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor this evening?
Good evening, Katie Thiel, Lower Providence, Lower Providence, that's where I live. Good evening. I just had a few things I wanted to say. The first thing is, we've always talked about how great our teachers are, and I had an experience today that I just wanted to share and give a shout out to a teacher. Ms. Paschley from Arrowhead was actually at the MCIU today with fourth and fifth graders at the Math 24 Tournament, from my understanding. I saw her, I was able to see her, we said hi, because I was there as well. But I wanted to say that I appreciate her as a teacher and give her a shout out, because that's, it was just wonderful to see her engaged and bring those students. I think they did well, not a hundred percent sure, but I think they did really well. That's the first thing. The second is, just because the math program was, the music program, I'm sorry, has been celebrated today, I do just want to chime in. I think the music program at Methacton is such a wonderful, wonderful thing that we have here, and I am always so grateful to all of our music teachers and for the experience our students have. My kids have directly benefited from it. I've seen the impact on my own students' lives as a teacher and an educator and as a parent. We all know, or we don't know, now we do know, music brings so much rich background knowledge and growth, and it supports math. And so it's great for our entire educational community as well, and I just am so grateful for the awards they won and for the experience they give our students. And finally, when it comes to the ballards, I appreciate the conversation. I also appreciate the need to move to make sure our learning spaces are safe. I'm an Arrowhead parent, and I, my kids are on that playground every day, so I appreciate that. It's great to hear that there are grants available through the state and that this is supported for safety, and I would just encourage that those grants maybe be looked at. I don't know if they're available for all the other elementary schools, but just making sure that all elementary schools are looked at, which I'm sure you're already doing. But I thank you for that conversation and revisiting that, because I'm sure safety measures are changing all the time as they should be. So thank you so much. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor this evening? All right, seeing none. Any other comments from board members to wrap up? Ms. Perdue?
Just have a few things. First of all, I do want to say thank you for the parents for coming out, providing insight on Mr. Bickel. I think any of us that have, are sitting here that have had kids go through his chorus and working with him know how our teachers are incredible. I think we, none of us can sit here and say, I teach- I think we, none of us can sit here and say I teach anything bad about our teachers. Our teachers are what keeps our students in the building, right? So to me, I value every single teacher, and I know Mr. Bickel has done a lot for our kids, whether it's bringing them in for them to actually take part in chorus, which they, if you ask them outside of here, they wouldn't do. I have a kid that never wanted to participate till he got here. So it is a great, he is a great teacher, and I'm hoping we can get a little bit more from the administration as far in reference to Mr. Bickel. I did want to also go back in reference to the playground, and we did ask the question last week. I don't know if people, for those in the audience, last week, the question was brought up. We know all of our playgrounds are not designed the same. We don't have the same ballads at all the playgrounds because I know I'm, I'm at Warseton on a weekly basis with Girls on the Run, and we know what is there. So maybe it's something that I will bring back up to Mr. Regina, just because I know he's well, very familiar with what we have in place at most of our schools in reference to the playground, what we have. I know Warseton Playground sits further back, but I think part of the safety team is looking at where we can improve and then carry through with those improvements. So if you have anything else to add on in reference to that, I think that would be helpful, and that was that. So thank you.
I can certainly add just something small. It's just that Arrowhead was the drive specifically, but we recognize that other playgrounds may have some of the similar things that we need to look into, and we are investigating that.
Listen, ballards are, and fencing and all those things are scheduled within the construction plans for all of our buildings and the assessments are prepared. So it's just that there's a real immediate need here based on the proximity of the of the road, the cars to the playground. That's simply the reason why we're moving faster on this one than the other locations. Plus, some of the other locations are also having playground renovations that are occurring this summer. So we don't want to put the ballers in to prevent equipment and everything getting to the locations where the construction will take place.
Any other questions or comments? I actually just had a couple. One was one comment that just left me confused was referring to the existing ballards as merely decorative. And just to clarify, the existing ballers provide their own safety function of illumination at night. Is that correct?
Well, certainly. They provide a function, and they were designed for that function. You know, we're, you know, the, there was no, this would be like us looking at Eagleville, you know, after twenty-some years of construction and saying, okay, we want to put ballads there, and there may be, you know, ballards of, for illumination in place, and we'd have to decide whether or not we want to keep them there or add these other safety ballads in its place. There's really not much of a difference between what's happening at Arrowhead and what would happen with our review and assessments on all of our other properties. So just like we did here at the high school, you know, we built this back in 1965, we just didn't have the best practices at that time to put the ballards in place, and that's what's happening. The best practices and the review of the facilities came after the design and the construction.
Thank you. And just one other question. The reports and presentations that we did do on the Audubon property where we did discuss possible educational options and the cost involved and, you know, whether we wanted to lease it out to another entity such as Lower Providence Township, are those all still available on the website for you?
They are on the website. They're available. A lot of those presentations occurred prior to the determination by the board to level the property, as well as some additional ones were added after that based on the original motion that occurred. So and there, and there may be more that come in the future, but I'm sharing with you, and I shared with you this evening, that I don't see anything in the very near future, and our deadline that we impose for ourselves is approaching. And therefore, we need to either pivot, make a decision, or, you know, delays.
Okay, but but they are still online, like even though we did make this determination, they are still online and available for the public to look at. Okay, thank you. That was what I was getting at. Okay, anyone else for any comments? All right. May I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Reese, may I have a second? Mr. Ruckstuhl? Thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.